Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This is a Marion City Council Meeting for Thursday, July 7th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. A little call, please.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Ms. Atkins. Mayor Abou Osley.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Ms. Mensah.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda this evening, we have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and I've asked Councilmember Mensah to read the proclamation. Seth, are you going to accept it, or someone here?
We have Macy Lovell here to accept it on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department. Macy's an intern for Parks and Rec. She's currently out at WOW. And she is overseeing many of the programs they were doing and assisting a lot with the special events.
Okay, Macy, would you like to come forward, please?
Stand right here. Let me read through this. Near and dear to my heart, the Parks Department. Whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of successful communities and fundamental to the well-being of all people. And whereas parks and recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts brain health and encourages physical activity through sports, hiking, bicycling, aquatics, and many other activities that promote active lifestyles. And whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas parks and recreation enhance a community's economic prosperity through higher property values, increased tourism, crime reduction, and the attraction and retention of businesses. And whereas parks and recreation are essential in providing adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for people of all ages to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Marion is proud of its more than 600 acres of parks, trails, and natural areas and recognizes the benefits derived from such resources in promoting the well-being of our community and giving residents opportunities for a great quality of life. Now therefore I, Sarah Mensah, on behalf of Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month. Do you have anything to say?
I do have a couple words.
Seth's going to talk. Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you guys so much for having me. I feel extremely honored. In honor of Parks and Recreation Month, we decided that we wanted to make an activity calendar that highlights all of our variety of parks, trails, and community events that we host throughout the summer. So, um, to make our community stronger and more vibrant and to help us reach higher, we decided that putting this calendar on our Facebook page and our city website will help create more community involvement and hopefully get those peoples to our parks, because that's what matters. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you're enjoying your time with the department.
Oh, I am. It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, next is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If anyone is here to address the council on any item that's on the agenda but not part of a public hearing, please come forward at this time. If others have comments that are on topics that are not on the agenda, there will be time at the end of the meeting for that, so. Mr. Caraway, are you here to address council? Come on forward.
Good evening, councilmen and women. Nathan Caraway, representing 958 967th Avenue in Marion. As you're aware from the previous council meeting and your work session, you're aware of the issue of the sewer at those two properties, the adjoining property with the School of Rock in this. I was not able to attend Tuesday, but I did listen to the audio. There's a few clarifications I'd like to make, some questions I have, and maybe some further explanations just to understand that we're on the same page. Greg couldn't be here tonight. I believe he corresponded with Mike and sent some emails, so I'm not going to represent him, but I do know he was attempting to be represented in his absence. Basically, what we have is a unique problem, and we have a solution. But the solution is obviously proposed in a manner that's largely equitable for the city of Marion. The proposal for the C-Channel route, which stays in the café zone, would not be my preferred method. But understanding that basically this comes down to a problem-solving issue, an equality issue, and an economics issue, then I can appreciate that it's a patch to make it work, something that predates all of us, a problem that's existed that none of us knew. In my discussions with Greg and with Mike, I felt that from the equality aspect, there's no provision shown on any map for sewer service for me. Given that the close proximity to the manhole, then it would, one could presume that they could assume a hookup to that. So when you talk about equality and the proposal that I recommended that my allowance be given to School of Rock, it's because there wasn't anything drawn in that I'm aware of, and I'll obviously respect Mike's opinion on that. So when the allowance was discussed from my perspective, and that was my idea, it wasn't intended to be a full boat 6684, whatever that number was, allowance. It would have been, since the previous council meeting, it was discussed by city staff that each property owner would get 40 feet of sewer. Since I'm getting zero, then I thought it would be fair to say that whatever it takes to give me a sewer hookup, if there was anything above that, maybe that could help out my neighbor who has a problem that predates him as well. So that was the intent behind the allowance, not the full 6684. Just wanted to clarify that. I did also, I would actually like to have council understand, or at least have confirmation, since I didn't ask this question specifically before tonight, that I do have an access. And the question that I have is, we understand the city's position of not wanting to have a private line, which we have currently. But since I'm not drawn in, that I can see as a hookup, then what it looks like is we're going back with a private line. So then there comes the question of equality and treatment with the other property owners. So I just want to understand a few more of those questions, since timing is of the essence for this project, that we, and it's not that Mike didn't answer this, I didn't specifically ask this part of the question. So I'd like to know that that's, that I am going to have a hookup. And in a good-faith effort to my neighbor, who were involved in a mess together, if there was some overage, we thought maybe we could apply that towards him to help him out a little further. So are there any questions you have on what I'm stating with that at this point?
Does anyone have a question? For clarification on this?
Yeah, just a clarification.
I think when we get to the item on the agenda, we can talk to the staff, but I think you have something.
Not, not to Nathan directly, no.
Okay, if you don't mind, is that okay?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Anyone else have a question for Mr. Caraway? Clarification from him?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to address the council on any item that is on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing? Please come forward. Okay, then we'll proceed with the consent agenda, Mr. Harper.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F1, resolutions numbers 30677 through 30693.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F3, resolutions 30677 through 30693. Discussion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I wanted to just call attention to item B1, which is the resolution approving payment to service master restoration in case anyone wanted to make a motion to remove that from consent agenda or have further discussion on that item.
Yeah, Your Honor and Kara. I guess my general feeling on this is, is that just given the conditions under which the work was performed and a contract drafted, I think it would be appropriate just to act on it as stated, as planned for tonight, and then any additional matters that might relate to interest payment or anything like that, deal with those separately.
Any further discussion? On the consent agenda? Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next item, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention. This will include items E1 through E3 and resolution numbers 30694 through 30696.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention as follows: Items E1 through E3, resolutions 30694 through 30696. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention. I will turn the meeting back over to the mayor. Thank you. Okay, on to the regular agenda under Public Services. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number 30697, approving amendment number two to the agreement with Cedar Rapids, City of Cedar Rapids, regarding the provision of wastewater treatment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30697, approving the amendment number two to the agreement with the City of Cedar Rapids for the provision of wastewater treatment. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution number 30697, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 30698, awarding solid waste collections system study proposal to SCS engineers.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 30698, awarding solid waste collections system study proposal to SCS engineers. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number 30698, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve project calendar for the pre-engineered metal building package associate, excuse me, associated with the new public service maintenance facility as follows. This will be resolutions 30699 through 30701.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion, to approve the motion to approve the project calendar for the pre-engineered metal building package associated with the new public service maintenance facilities, including resolutions 30699 through 30701. Discussion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Ryan, just, we discussed this on Tuesday night, but just for the record this evening and for the audience here as well as online, can you just recap again the project timeline, and I see that the slide has that.
So, the project timeline is that bids will be due July 20th, 2022. Public hearing is set for July 21st, 2022. Engineer's estimate is just over 4.275 million. We did include a bid alternate for our hardened steel facility. We are scheduled to complete that portion of the project by June 23rd of 2023. Most of that is due to the long lead times associated with the package. We are hoping to trim that down here once we get the bid packages back.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve project calendar for the foundation repair package associated with the new public service maintenance facility as follows, encompassing resolutions 30702 through 30704.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the foundation repair package associated with the new public service maintenance facility, including resolutions 30702 through 30704. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. This time we have a public hearing on the amendment to Chapter 75 of the Court of Ordinances related to utility terrain vehicles. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation? Chad, no?
Your Honor, we don't have an additional presentation over what we had the other night, but there are some additional answers to some of the questions that were asked. Lucas, if you could go ahead to the next slide. Yes, okay. So on Tuesday night, there were questions about how the fee schedule came about, and without disrupting Chief Kitzmiller on his vacation, I took a look at what our comparable cities did, and I took a look at what we have for other provisions of our code that we handle in similar manners. And so we have three ways that we typically deal with these. They're scheduled violations. And what we do is we either create that scheduled violation and establish a specific fee in that code section, which is what Chief Kitzmiller did here. We also do that in the animal care and control code where we specify what happens for each type of offense listed within that chapter and how much each offense is. Or we can do a scheduled violation, and then we add it to our list of scheduled violations. We have a code chapter for that. And then the specified fine for those is $50, but there is discretion to go higher on those or to increase them for subsequent offenses. So those are kind of the two options. The chief went with the first option. That's also why the noise violations are specified at $25. That's something we couldn't change really with this ordinance unless we change the noise ordinance as well, because that's dictated by our noise ordinance. So we would create a conflict if we handled that differently here. The other question that came up was about the impact to a driver's license. And so one thing that I wanted to note was that even though the registration and some of the other regulations are handled by the DNR, the DOT still handles violations of the street violations of state code, which would also apply to our city code violations. Those are typically filed as a state code charge. So if somebody's speeding, if they're operating while intoxicated and they're charged under the state code, that gets handled in two different ways, even if you're in a regular motor vehicle, like if you're driving your pickup down the road and you get pulled over for OWI, you will have a criminal charge, and that deals with your criminal fines, fees, jail time, things like that. But your driver's license matter is handled administratively by the DOT. So that would be a separate matter there. So if somebody received a violation of, like, speeding, seatbelts, OWI, that would be handled in the same way that any criminal violation of the street code would be handled.
Okay. Any other?
If you would like us to change how the fee schedule is handled, that's something you can direct us to do this evening. We are able to make that change.
Okay. So we'll handle the public hearing portion, and then we'll, when we get to the consideration of the ordinance, then we can have discussion, further questions. Okay. Is there anyone here to address the council on this topic? Let's start with anyone in opposition. If you're in opposition, please come forward. Okay. Anyone in favor, who wants to address council, please come forward at this time. And if, good, I see you have your card filled out. We'll ask people to fill out the card, and please hand it to the staff. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Joe Cruiser, 1920 43rd Street Court, Marion.
Welcome.
One of the things, I was here on Tuesday night, one of the things I agree, I feel the fines are too low. I, we've been fighting a long hard, or been working a long time to try to get this pushed through. I don't want a couple of bad doers ruining it for the rest of us. I would love to see the headlines of the Gazette or something come out and say, "UTV pass," or "UTV ordinance passed in Marion, but outstandingly high fines." I would love to see where a noise ordinance or random hoodlum stuff, you know, be a $500 fine. Make it hurt, make it worth our police department or other people's time to cover their time with the fine. It just, I know, I mean, and I'm sure anybody in the group that's been pushing for this would like that too, because we're all good law-abiding citizens, and we want to be able to make sure this all works for everybody. But yet, we're going to have the ones that aren't going to follow laws. It happens in society. And I would rather see it hurt with them than to let them sort of chuckle over it and say, "I don't have no muffler on my unit, and it cost me $25," you know? And he can repeatedly do that. I mean, sooner or later, the PD will shut them down, I hope. But that's just my opinion, my view. It's just, we've been working hard enough for this that we don't want someone coming and ruining it for us. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
No?
Anyone else?
Just to follow up on that, we could make this just a simple misdemeanor, and, which we're limited to simple misdemeanors for city code anyway, and that the fine schedules there, the limit is $2,560. Oh, sorry, that's simple misdemeanor. That seemed really high. I was like, man, they've really cracked down on those. It's $855. That sounds all right.
Please come forward. State your name and address. Thank you.
Jason Ross, 2401 Lyric Drive, Marion. I just wanted to give my appreciation for as far as we've came with this so far, all the work that you guys have done with that, especially the chief. Very appreciative of that. Then again, I was along the same lines as Joe. I would like to see significant fines for somebody violating, especially our trails, and that we've done a lot of hard work on that, so just wanted to pass that along. When you look at other things, a lot of the cities around the state, they're just straight up passing whatever the state has. And I really do like Marion's, the turn signal aspect and the seatbelt and all that, time restrictions. I'm kind of, kind of for that. 10:00 PM is a good one to start with. You know, I'd like to review it in a year, maybe, if everything goes well, so. That's it.
Okay, does anyone have questions? Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else to address council?
Hello, Craig Zachman, 2740 14th Avenue, Marion. Again, we've fought for this, and then, I mean, it's a passion for us. We appreciate your time. You know, as a resident, it would be a major plus for me and, you know, everyone else. We're really hoping you guys pass it. We're totally for, like I said, the fines. I mean, if you're, we don't want, like I said, other people to ruin it, especially out-of-towners. There's a lot of poker runs that go on throughout the counties, and it would, it would be appreciated because then we could just leave our houses and go do the poker runs, or, let's say, I camp in Monticello. It's legal there. I could actually drive from my house with my UTV to Monticello. And with gas prices, it'd be a plus. And we have a golf cart there, and ATVs, I've seen what's going on there. Facebook also, the PD in Monticello put out a post the other day saying, hey, it's opened up July 1st. You can now use the highway going through there, no golf carts. And so, and they're like, they're totally for it. They're the PD there. They've had, from what I understand, no issues.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, quick question. What kind of mileage do you get with your UTVs?
To be honest, I couldn't tell you. Better than my F-250.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure of that. All right, thanks.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you exactly. I did a, probably like a 40-mile, 50-mile poker run, and I might have used half tank. So, you know, somewhere in there. Thanks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Probably could go to interview, but just because you brought up the poker run conversation. So, somebody was organizing an event like that. And you're, we're talking about, the laws are a little different in different communities, as we mentioned, tighter or not. So if you're doing an event like that, you probably would have some people from out of town, which we've talked about that, whether that helps our locals, businesses. Who organized? Who would, who would be an organizer of that?
Organizers, a lot of, like, like, one of them I did was for a young kid that had cancer that died in the Monticello area. And it was a fundraiser for the new park playground structure. So it was his family did that one. Some of the clubs, Trail Ridge Riders, I think it is, out of Anamosa, they put on several. The park producers of Jones County puts on, they put on one.
Okay, so there's communication methods available through clubs?
Yes.
People involved in, for the networks that if you were trying to explain the new rules, or
Yeah.
that, or whatever, that there are ways to distribute that with, in addition to just kind of a blanket community piece? I'm assuming you're all pretty connected to the communication network.
Yes, and then, like, they have, a lot of it's through Facebook.
Okay.
You know, they'll post it on there, and then there's a discussion part on that. So then the organizer could put, you know, you could add the Marion ordinance in there.
Okay.
And say, you know, our rules here. A lot of them are kind of going, like they were saying, with the state, the new state regulations. So they're kind of bringing, that's kind of tying most of the cities together. And kind of more of a uniform, so we don't have to worry about going from one city to the next and thinking, oh, what do I have to have for this city and not this, this city or?
Okay, okay.
So that's, that's kind of, that was kind of, I think, the reasoning. So that's, that's kind of, that was kind of, I think, the the reasoning for the, for the statewide. It's just to kind of put up, you know, together one set of rules for the most part and go from there. And then the cities have the opportunity to. To flag, you know, to go to each direction that they want to go also.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else to address council on this topic? Okay, seeing that no one's coming forward, we'll reach, we'll.
We received two comments in advance of the meeting.
Go ahead.
First one was from Zach Fisher at fourteen thirty-fiftieth Street, spoke in uh support of the ordinance. The next one was John Gohar at four-three-one-five Widgeon Drive, also in support of the ordinance.
Okay. All right, any other comments received outside of the, outside of this public hearing to staff?
Yeah, Mayor, um.
Yes, go ahead.
Chief Kitzmiller did not me, want me to uh let you all know that he did get uh people that were in favor. They were all positive comments. He didn't receive any negative feedback. So.
Okay, please note that for the public record then. Okay, uh, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And proceed to the ordinance.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two days fourteen, amending chapter seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances. Related to utility terrain vehicles. This is the initial consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen, amending chapter seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances related to utility terrain vehicles. This is the first consideration. Discussion.
Your Honor, go ahead. Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So just to recap, uh, some main data points that have been uh presented uh primarily by. Uh, Chief Kitzmiller, um, he's received positive comments by his um. Uh, police chief peers in several other cities that they've had minimal to no problems in 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 those areas. Um, I think uh through his research as well as just general observation, um, noise does not to be a. Uh, appear to be a problem any greater than existing licensed vehicles that are on the road. Um, from a safety perspective, I think if we i- i- just make a comparison between the UTVs. Which are enclosed with seat belts, uh, and restraint for all occupants of, as compared to perhaps motorcycles. The safety is uh enhanced over and above uh comparatively to motorcycles and um. I would have to say what uh uh council's uh um comment about perhaps uh examining the uh. The uh uh fine structure to be a misdemeanor, I believe, or simple misdemeanor. Uh, what, however is appropriate, that might simplify the uh communication of any uh potential fines that would be levied for for violating our ordinance. I, I think, uh, in general, the primary concerns have been addressed throughout this, this entire discourse, and I'd like to echo what uh. Council member Menzner said on Tuesday night, uh, really want to a- a- applaud the um respectful and conscientious engagement of the community on this. I think the, the one concern that I still think is valid for us, but I think we can react to it. Is, you know, does it, how does this add to the aesthetics of the community as we are trying to, you know, that we're trying to achieve? Uh, but I think if we uh set a uh calendar date in the future to review the performance of the ordinance. And see how um h- how we have fared over, say, a six-to-twelve-month period of time. Um, we can, we we can also then understand, um, how is, how is this either complimented or been a detriment relative to the community aesthetics? But on that point, I would just say my, my, my personal opinion is. Um, these machines are not radically different than a, than an open-door Jeep Wrangler with big mud tires and et cetera, so I just. I guess the, the point of this is, I think it's just a different class, smaller class of vehicle that we're accommodating. So those are a collection of my thoughts as well as how we've addressed the concerns.
Other comments, discussion? Go ahead.
Um, yes, repeat, re- reiterating that, I want to thank you all for the open conversation, the education on what these are. I think. There's work to be done in the fact that the initial, you know, a lot of people who aren't familiar would probably have a similar reaction to I did when this came up, which was like, whoa. Like, no. Um, but through the education, conversations, explanations, you kind of bring that forward um in a, in a very cordial and. Great grassroots manner. Um, I would probably. Add on to that, and I have gathered from the conversations you've had with us and the presentations. That this is probably top of mind, so I don't mean this to sound this way, but it's, because I don't want to put any more pressure on y'all on, on this. You know, but um just kind of that help us in A, educating the community what this is, that it's not. Packs of really loud vehicles that are going to be roaring through neighborhoods in this community and that um. You know, you're watching kind of others and just kind of being res- being respectful of the community coming along in this process and learning. And um, especially if we have visitors coming in and what that all means and, you know. That's all I'm kind of asking, and I say not putting more pressure on you all because you've been very, very good about monitoring and understanding that, you know, you're. Trying to make this happen and we, we respect that too. So just kind of help us continue to have the conversations. With the community that it's so, it's okay, because I, because personally, and I'll say this, I mean, I do not like noise. Like roaring motorcycles drive me, people that just have to make noise with their vehicles drives me. I don't care if it's a car, the mufflers, whatever. You know, I'll take, I'll even take the fireworks over the, the roaring mufflers, but um, so I'm kind of ultra-sensitive to it. My family will say the same thing, but not everybody is, and I understand there's some safety pieces involved in that, so. Thank you for what you've done in the communication. Thank you for being open to the conversations and our questions and answering them. And again, we're just gonna. Keep moving this ball, but we're just gonna keep asking your help and in the networks that you have in helping us talk to others about it.
All right. Thank you. Other discussion, I'm going to the council. Go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, uh, to follow up on one of Sarah's comments. She said not to put too much pressure on the group that's in favor of this, that are, that are the citizens that have UTVs. I think we need to put pressure on this group, uh, because you've already heard. That we will be reviewing this at some time down the road, whether it's a year or whatever that time period is, so. The police have a job to do, but I think with enough of you out there, you know, if there's a bad apple out there. You're the one that can probably control them quicker and faster than the police, so you can help educate them. And uh, deal with them probably more direct, more quicker than our police department can. I would like to also bring up at our second, when it's, this is going for the second consideration. In two weeks to further discuss the level of the fines. So again, I made the comment on Tuesday, I totally agree with the gentleman that came up here about higher fines. Uh, in some of these situations, so I am, I'm in favor of that, so I'd like to have at least maybe some discussion. The chief is not here tonight, so he's the one that drafted all of this, so I'd like to have uh him maybe come back. In two weeks with some further discussion on the fine levels, so otherwise I'm. Been in favor, we've been talking about this, what, now for three, maybe four months since it first came up as an issue? So I started on the fence and after uh doing some legwork on it, uh, I then quickly came around to. Uh, be in favor of it, and I think our chief has done a wonderful job listening to all the comments. And making the adjustments in the ordinance that we're uh talking about tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I, just to uh. Address something that Councilman Harper said, um, it's not necessarily true that these are all going to uh. Be enclosed, is that correct? I mean, I don't see that restriction in the ordinance. I mean, I know that the, I know that the ones that we saw in the parking lot, all of them are not necessarily going to look like that, right?
I would have to take a look at what the state requirements are. I don't know that it requires full enclosure, but there's some specifications that are included. And I, I would have to go back and look at what the state requires.
Right.
But not enclosed.
Okay, um, all right. And I just have a comment, I've been, it's kind of contradictory that in the ordinance they're referred to as off-road. So, um. I, I ought to appreciate, I know, I know when we first were contacted by members of the group, um, and I called, I don't remember who was I called, but I called one of, one of them. And uh asked them to bring examples to the parking lot so we can take a look and see what these look like. Uh, I um, I appreciate the cooperation and the, and the willingness to educate. Uh, I appreciate. All the work that's gone into it from the chief to, you know, everyone who's, who's worked to draft the ordinance. Um, I'm just, I'm just not there yet. I started out on the fence and I'm still on the fence. It doesn't mean that I can't get there. Uh, I'm still, I'm still on the fence. I'm still apprehensive about this. I'm in, more in favor of a more measured approach. That, that gets expanded after we see how things, how things go. It was encouraging to me to hear the different cities. Do we have any other? Data on that, um, different cities that, that, that have um implemented them. Um, that helped me a little bit, but I'm just, I'm just not all the way there yet, um.
Chief Kitzmiller did reach out to all of the comparable cities and some of the smaller cities that have them, and what I could find in my notes was that he had not had any responses. I have not had an opportunity yet to get all of the data back from the two larger cities that were there. Um, but I hope to have that before we come back for our next reading. Um, the best recollection I have is that when chief reached out to them, neither city reported any incidents.
Yeah, I guess having the two larger cities is, was a bit encouraging, you know, because my, all along I was just thinking. What is it that they know that we don't know, the larger cities that are comparable to us, a growing city? Um, rather than smaller towns, smaller cities, towns that are declining, um, cities that are declining, um. But then, you know, hearing that two larger cities have implemented it and haven't had issues, it's, it's helpful. Um, like I said, I just don't know that I'm there yet on this first reading, but I'll continue working on it. Uh, yes, go ahead.
So for, if we're kind of jumping back to the, the fees and fines conversation violations, does that come up? Is that covered later then? Is that a separate conversation if we wanted to amend or look at the fee schedule?
Do that now, or you, or can be. In a second hearing or third, third reading. Um, yes, Ryan, you had something?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, as it relates to the approval of the ordinance, that is a decision point for the council that you can direct us as you're discussing this. Uh, the overall ordinance, and so that's something that, once we get direction, we can incorporate in whatever the, whatever the desire is of the council. So.
Doesn't have to be amended. Is, is that what you're saying?
The, the action you would have to, yeah, the, the, the actual ordinance wouldn't have to be amended. That is presented to you would make a motion to amend it um as, as part of your overall approval of it.
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm also looking, and there are some violations that um in the state code for on-state roadways are set at a s- a specific amount that I did not see before. But in looking for the requirements, I magically stumbled on one buried in three-twenty-one that was not with the other ATV parts. So um, that may be something that maybe the chief and I look at together, and once he's back, I can ask him, why did you set these amounts? And we can talk through that together and come back to you guys with some proposals on that part of the ordinance.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. No. Okay, we have one no. The ayes have it and the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-seven-zero-five, approving contract with Bill Miller Logging Inc. For the removal of timber from Legion Park related to the twenty-twenty derecho and authorizing payment in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand. Four hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-seven-zero-five, approving the contract with Bill Miller Logging Inc. For removal of timber from Legion Park. Related to the twenty-twenty derecho damage and authorizing the payment in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Seth, um, I know the work that was done in uh the Heritage Woods area was done in the winter. Would this be done in the winter timeframe as well?
This is, this is going to be a little bit different uh parameters, so we do have a, a conservation easement there and also work with the Natural Heritage Foundation on that. Um, there's also a lot of oaks uh within that, that woodland, and uh this, this area doesn't particularly have that. Uh, those varieties of trees uh currently there, and so we want to be facing a lot of the challenges that we typically see during the fall time from. The erosion and then also uh dealing with oak wilt.
Okay, so you'd be getting after it sooner.
We would start, we would start in July for these projects.
All right, thank you.
Other discussion? All those in favor of resolution three-zero-seven-zero-five, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to receive and file correspondence regarding nine-five-eight slash nine-sixty and nine-seventy-six Seventh Avenue. Slash seven-ten Seventh Street Sanitary Sewer, Nathan Caraway Property, School of Rock Building.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to receive and file correspondence. Regarding nine-fifty-eight, nine-sixty and nine-seventy-six Seventh Avenue, seven-ten Tenth Street Sanitary Sewer from Nathan Caraway. Um, discussion. Okay, all those in favor of receiving and filing the correspondence, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to direct staff to draft an agreement with the property owners of nine-seven-six Seventh Avenue, seven-ten Tenth Street regarding the sanitary sewer service. And offering a credit of six thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars. This is School of Rock Building.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to draft an agreement. With the property owners of nine-seventy-six Seventh Avenue and seven-ten Tenth Street regarding the sanitary sewer service and offering a credit at six thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Discussion, and this is where we can have the discussion regarding Mr. Caraway's presentation, if you have questions for staff or anything like that, so.
Yeah, the question I was going to ask earlier is, so I understand with the C connection that's going from the school rock to the sewer in the alley. So I understand that, but as I look at that, uh, Mr. Caraway indicated that he will, he does not have a. Do I understand that you currently then would not have a connection to the sewer? So how is his existing property where he demolished the building, how is his sewer connection going to handle for that lot?
So right now, there's a manhole right here where the red dot is on the screen.
Okay.
There's an existing public sanitary sewer that goes along his Westerly property down the alley and goes north. To the east-west alley and then goes west down that alley, so there is a private or a public sanitary sewer right here.
Right there.
So wherever he wants to have his sewer exit his future building, he would be able to tie into the sewer that exists in the alley. That's public and he has full access to.
Okay, so that connection, he's got. Okay, so that connection, he's got a number of connection points that he can make based upon how he wants to construct that building.
Correct.
So that answers positively his question of he wants to make sure there's a connection.
He has a connection. We cannot deny that.
Okay, so that, that's a positive answer to his, to his question or his concern. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's the only question I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Grant.
Just so I'm clear, if Mr. Caraway's building was uh still there and we're doing this work, would he have an opportunity to take part in a, um, I guess getting a support from the city in order to make improvement in the connection that his building has, assuming that it would be there?
So how we have done every structure in the project is we're not giving anybody a credit. What we're doing is we are going in and replacing the existing private sewer service that goes from the city's main to the building so that we don't have an issue in the future with, say, Orangeburg or something out there and we don't ruin our streetscape. So we are doing that to go above and beyond to make sure that we're protecting our infrastructure moving forward. If Mr. Caraway's building was still there today and it came south to say a sewer that was out in Seventh Avenue, we would replace it as part of the project. Um, as it stands today, his sewer service is a combined service that goes under his existing building and ties into the sewer in the alley currently. There's just nothing, he just, when he demoed his building, he capped that service. So he has a service, it's, goes in the gravel that's out there today and ties into the sanitary sewer. So he has a service right now to a building that does not exist.
Yes, Ryan.
Mike, can you just clarify the, the, the points of connection as part of the project all face the other street? Is that accurate?
So it varies. The areas that would be east of tenth, the sewer goes down the center of, of seventh. There is actually a sewer that goes north-south on Tenth Street. However, the way the School of Rock building flows, it all flows the west. So, I mean, if, if School of Rock really wanted to, they could replumb their entire basement, tear it all up, it's all finished. And they could plumb and come out and tie into this. That wasn't something that they wanted to do, to have to tear up their entire basement to do, so.
And the reason, Mike, the other, the other properties is that oriented north? I'm still learning the directions. So to the north of there.
North.
Those, all those connections came in the other direction.
Yeah, so example, Friday, um, the Made Right Building, all those new services were ran from the building to the sewer, um, the, the public main.
And that is, that is the justification for the contribution or the, the reimbursement for that as part of the project.
Correct.
Because that's the portion where is, where it was distinguishes this one is the location and the proximity to and the connection points for the sewer in the alley.
Yep, and we do have this situation in other parts of town where, you know, they just wide off somebody else's service because it was easier back in the day than running their own service. Um, in those situations, the city doesn't get involved. It's a private issue between two property owners that they have to figure out. In this case, the city feels we're giving um that forty-foot of allowance and a clean-out um while we're doing the project and we're having our contractor do it. So we feel like we're going above and beyond and providing more than we would have if it was just two property owners on a residential street.
So back to the scenario that Mr. Caraway's uh building was still there. School of Rock is, um, and I think it was on the diagram that it, there is a uh, there was or is an existing sewer line there that goes to the alleyway. Is that correct?
Correct. So the existing service goes underneath the old Caraway building.
Okay. That service line that went underneath the Caraway building, was that public? Was, was that a private line? Uh, what I'm trying to discern in my own mind is we're, we're providing a benefit to School of Rock. And as you can tell, I probably thought about this more since Tuesday, so I apologize um for thinking. It, 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 it just seems to me there is somewhat of an analog uh in logic for the Caraway property. We're, we're, we're in essence taking, School of Rock is coming off of a private line. I'm trying to discern how that is materially different than um an equivalent benefit to undo that icky system that was probably put in in about nineteen twenty or whatever. I, I'm just trying to reconcile how they are materially different and I'm just not getting it yet.
Um, I guess I'll try and explain it different ways. So all service, so we have a, a public sewer and everything from that public sewer out is all private. So at your house, the sewer line from your house to the public main is yours. So if it was put in as Orangeburg and it collapses, you actually have to tear up the street and fix that.
Then they're done that.
Yep. Um, so, um, if city council wanted to give Mr. Caraway the same allowance as we're giving School of Rock, you are more than welcome to do that. What we're doing is trying to, to fix the issue that has come before us of an existing service line that goes through private property to get to the public main. Um, and that's the green line that's shown going around his property that's outlined in, in yellow. Um, the city doesn't have to do anything. We could say it's a private issue, you two figure it out. Um, we feel like because we have a contractor there, um, because the other services um got that forty-foot, we're just basically giving that same amount. If you wanted to give that to Mr. Caraway, you're more than welcome to.
And council member, if I can add on to that, I think one of the things that makes that building unique is the, the way that it's flow, it flows, it flows the opposite direction at the others. So the connection point is to the back instead of the front. And when we reviewed this, oh, a couple of months, a month ago, a little bit more than that. As Mike mentioned, the School of Rock building could replumb it, so it comes out onto the other, other end. But then that requires significant renovation in the basement of that building, which, as I understand it, has been renovated already.
So just to clarify, the Caraway property flowed, the, the sewer line flows to the east, then connects to a different line that then subsequently went to the west, to the alleyway?
So the School of Rock building all flows westerly and then flows through the Caraway property to the public main. Back when the Caraway building still existed, it actually flowed into the School of Rock building and then used that shared service to go through the Caraway building and the School of Rock building to the public main. So the shared service before.
Okay, so it's, it's kind of on that basis. I, I can't separate uh, in my own mind, make it, make a different, uh, a, a differential assessment for School of Rock or, or the Caraway building. I, I'm just because we, what, our, our collective effort here is to try to undo a real icky sewer line problem that exists. And, and so, um, I just, I, you, you've answered all my questions. I just need to soak on it here for a moment or two.
The, council member, if it helps, the, that diagram in green is working to correct that issue. Okay, okay.
And honestly, this doesn't happen to happen now. Um, it's just convenient to do it now while we have, the city has a contractor out there. This is a situation where the streetscape in front of the Caraway building is not going in because there's no point in building that streetscape right up to a building that then will have to be demolished in order to build the building in the future. Um, so this is going along the right away in the cafe zone. Um, that isn't going to be built right now, so it doesn't, we're just trying to solve the situation while we have a crew out there working. Council could say that, again, it's a private issue between two property owners and we want nothing to do with it and walk away and let those two figure it out. But because we have a contractor here and because we're already doing work, that's why we're bringing this forward.
If I can, just one more question, just because I think this might help too. Mike, the, to the, if up is north to the west, that's a parking lot, is that accurate?
Yeah, so the, the parking lot back here would be the Goldfinch Parking Lot.
And is that, that, is that parking lot scheduled to be, um, is it a public parking lot or is it a private parking lot?
A private parking lot.
And so that is, is that or is that not um included in the streetscape project?
Um, so the entrance to it will be, but the exist, the parking lot will stay as is, other than entrance from Seventh Avenue to the, the parking lot. So say in the future that they decide they don't want their own private parking lot and they want to build a structure there, they would have to do the same thing that Mr. Caraway is going to do and build a sewer from that new building to the alley and connect the sewer. And that's a hundred percent on them, just like any new house that gets built.
I asked that question partly from my own um understanding. Um, as, as I was in here, as this project materialized, I will say that it is very common that, um, the, the solution that the city did previously with the private owners as you're developing the streetscape. Uh, one of the things that's important is, um, you want to protect that investment. Also, um, make sure that those private connections, as Mike had indicated, um, don't have to be addressed after you've now made the significant investment in the streetscape. Um, I think the, the fact that it's a parking lot, that's not part of that project also is an important uh factor to consider as you're considering this request.
Okay, anyone else? Oh.
Hi.
But let, uh.
Go ahead.
You have a follow-up?
I, I guess as I'm just reading the recommendation, it, it, in, in my mind's eye, it seems to me to one degree or another, we are in fact solving a private issue or helping solve a private issue for School of Rock.
We're helping both. I, I don't think Mr. Caraway wants that service through his building.
I, 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 I understand that. I, I understand that. And there's enough complexity with this. Um, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, go ahead, Randy.
Thank you. Mike, um, do we have, do we have any ordinances that say naturally that the developer or the owner would want to go to the shortest route for sewers? But is there any ordinance that says or states how a commercial or residential building should tie to the nearest connection? Or I'm wondering if we've got an ordinance and law issue in, and not only at this one, but as we start to see other renovations in the Uptown District that we may see flowing of sewers going the wrong directions and going under other adjacent properties? I'm just curious if this fits into an ordinance and law.
So.
Issue.
SUDAS is our statewide urban design and specifications books that I bring down once a year that we update. Um, per that code, um, each individual property is to have their own sewer service. So even when we do like a duplex, they each run their own sewer service because you run into an issue sometimes if you run a shared one. One's flushing stuff down the, the drain that the other shouldn't be and causing issues. So by separating those, um, there's no rules as far as how far they have to connect. They can run it as far as they want. There are slope requirements. So depending on the size of the main, you have to have what's called a self-cleansing velocity. So if you run a, a really big main, really flat to get farther, but you don't have enough water that flows through that pipe, then you get clogs in it. So you have to have enough flow and enough velocity to keep that moving.
So could School of Rock, just hypothetically here, and I, and I apologize and I appreciate everyone's patience because I want to understand this as well, but do they have the option? Could they have, could they in the future tie, if they're on a corner like that, to tie into three different sewer connections?
So in this case, there's only sewer east and west of them. So the sewer does not continue on Seventh Avenue on the south side of them.
Okay, and that's exactly what I was getting at.
Yeah, so it's north-south on tenth and it's north-south in the alley.
And Mike.
Thank you.
When we discussed this previously, I think Steph, when we reviewed it, if there was to be an extension elsewhere, that would be about, what, approximately sixty thousand dollars to serve one property?
Yeah, so basically the old Paul Draper building to the south, that alley, there is sewer down there. So we could run sewer all the way, so it's off the page down here, all the way up to the School of Rock building, but that would cost about sixty thousand dollars to do that for one service.
I, just like everyone else, we, we feel the pain on what the owners have to deal with here, but it's, um, it's still a mess when you got to go around other properties here, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll vote. Um, all those in favor of the motion directing staff to draft the agreement with, with the property owners of nine seventy-six Seventh Avenue and seven ten Tenth Street for the sanitary sewer service and offering a credit of sixty-six hundred and eighty-two dollars. That's the motion. Um, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, we have one no. The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Mr. Harper?
Sorry. Next page, I'm still thinking about all of that. Your honor, I move to uh direct staff to apply for Lynn County City of Cedar Rapids ARPA funding for the sanitary sewer project.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to direct staff to apply for Lynn County City of Cedar Rapids ARPA funding for the sanitary sewer project. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen designated an area of Marion, Iowa as the twenty-twenty-two multifamily urban revitalization area, and this is the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen designating an area of Marion as the, the twenty-twenty-two multifamily urban revitalization area. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-two dash thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion directing staff to negotiate a professional service agreement and scope of work to complete a retail analysis of the property located at twenty-seven hundred Seventh Avenue.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to direct staff to negotiate a professional services agreement and scope, scope of work to complete a retail analysis for the property at twenty-seven hundred Seventh Avenue. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside on the agenda for comments from the public on any item, uh, whether or not it's on the agenda. Uh, this is the time to come forward. If you want to address the council, please, please come forward. Hey, seeing that no one's coming forward, we'll go ahead and move on to council comments before Jenny. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, please, you're welcome to. Please, uh, just stand at the microphone, say your name and address and address the council, yes.
My name is Karen Lumsden. I'm at eighteen ninety Oak Creek Drive in wonderful city of Marion. Okay, I have one question.
Yes.
On your solid waste, is that company that you have uh hired, is that a landfill company or an energy transition company?
Okay, so can you clarify when you say on the solid waste, the company that we've hired, hired to do what?
Well, that sanitary sewer that you, I think you hired SCS.
Oh, I see, if the, on the, on the
One on tonight.
Agenda item, okay.
Yes.
You want to, or, or we can have Ryan reach out to you after the meeting. What's, what's
I'm just wondering if it's a solid waste.
Yeah.
Uh, management company or a lot of large company, uh, cities that are going through growing pains now are going to grow, uh, energy transition companies that do the analysis.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, uh, this is not, this is just a consulting company. And so they'll just do an analysis. They don't actually do work. They don't implement the work. They're here to do an analysis and make recommendations for it. do work, they don't implement the work. They're here to do an analysis and make recommendations for us.
Okay, so you're a landfill company.
They do landfill analysis, they do solid waste analysis.
You're not a good question. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that wanted to address council? All right, then we'll move on to council comments. We'll start with council member Sternad.
I have none, thank you.
I do, and I'm sure it will be repeated a few times, but just a great celebration, fireworks and fireflies, all the team to put that together. I know there's a lot of folks that have to make that happen. And we thank you for that. It was a great evening and a great celebration in our community.
Thank you.
I will echo that. It was a lot of fun, a lot of people. Thank you to Amber for all that she did, Jessica, all that she did, Seth and your staff did a wonderful job, all the volunteers that helped out, officers that were there helping out everything. So it was, I was, I was, got the pleasure of driving a golf cart around, giving people rides from parking lot up to the to the building. It was so much fun talking to all the people that were out there. Everyone was so excited for the evening and had a great time and I was surprised at how many people, I would say half of the hundreds of people I talked to were from Cedar Rapids, came into town for the fireworks, so it was, it was a lot of fun. And then a reminder for everyone that this Saturday morning, Uptown is the Uptown Marion Market, and Sarah is probably going to talk about yoga out at the Loud Park Saturday morning.
You can talk about that too, yeah. Yes, sunrise yoga is back Saturday.
Yep, so every, hopefully everyone can come out for the market uptown, and then there's also market at Tobby Park Saturday morning.
You just took my comment. I was gonna say I'll be at Tobby Park Saturday.
I didn't say yoga.
Office hours.
Yeah, office hours, so we got two farmers markets going on, so come out for either one or both. Uh, so that'd be a lot of fun. Yeah, it was fun to see Will driving around. I think he's trying to get some experience to get ready to drive the Zamboni, whatever form that is going to take in the future. So, yeah, so anyway, it was a great weekend, the crowd, I don't know how many people were there. I don't know if they're ever going to get an estimate, but it was an absolute terrific night, terrific crowd.
I I would say hopefully maybe next year, Will, you'll have the oppo- opportunity to be driving a real vehicle, a UTV. None of those golf carts. Yeah, different perspective, and certainly there were, you know, the great events around the holiday here in in our fine community. I've gained a different perspective. My my oldest boy is home from Valdosta, Georgia, and he's liking the relative cool weather that we're having compared to down there. But we did just a short little tour around town and just doing errands throughout the last week that he's been here. And his summative comment of how it's changed, he's a Lynn Mar grad, 2001, it was basically, oh, wow, how this has changed, this is cool. It's going to be very nice to have all this done, so I just wanted to share that. That's a totally unembellished, it's a scientific survey, a result from the good Dr. Harper from Valdosta, Georgia.
All right, thank you. For my part, last Friday, we had the ribbon cutting on the long-awaited 7th Avenue pedestrian bridge, which is a key piece to making the last connections of the C-Mark Trail that will allow us, people allow people to go from Uptown Marion to downtown Cedar Rapids and beyond. I think that's going to be a really major driver of people coming into our communities, both communities, people being able to have greater opportunities for for recreation on the trails. It was a really nice event. We invited the mayor and city manager of Cedar Rapids who joined us as as that that bridge is a symbolic, you know, a project that's connecting the two communities in a different way than just the ordinary streets. And it was a, it was a very nice event. Want to thank everyone who worked really hard on that project for for a long time. And people may recall that we started out with, you know, a certain design, and then we all decided that we wanted to reach higher. We went back to the drawing board, engaged an artist, and ended up with what we have, what we have now, and it's not complete yet. There will be, the the real artistic lighted features will will happen after the DOT gives final approval of the bridge itself. So there's more yet to come, and it's a, it's going to be not only a nice, nice connection for the people on the trail, but a a beautiful entryway feature for our city, and it says a lot about who we are as a city. I think when we show that we care about the aesthetics and we care about art and we care about how our community looks. And you can see that in everything that we do. We've been reaching higher, expecting better, asking for better. And it it's the the sentiment that that is generating, it most importantly, in our in our own community with residents. I, um, yesterday showed up at the one-year celebration of a a program that is they they call it the Marion Community Center, and it's a program that, you know, provides activities and interaction, opportunities for interaction for older adults in the community. And I stopped by and it was amazing, the the positive sentiment that I heard from that group of people about what's going on in their town, it it just very gratifying and it it's and it speaks highly to what everybody in this room, along with our community partners, along with all 300 employees of the city of Marion, along with the residents who are volunteering, nothing happens on its own, no one does anything on by themselves. And we are all as a community reaching higher and doing this, and it's, it's a lot of fun right now. I know that we have a lot of challenges and we have, we're not, we're not free of issues that we have to deal with as we grow as a city. The complexity of issues we have to deal with also grows and increases, but the 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 results are speaking for themselves, and I just want to thank everyone for their hard work, for their teamwork, for sticking to the vision and driving that vision. We drive our own destiny. I think that's been a major difference and a major change is that we in many ways are now, you know, driving the bus of our own destiny and making things happen that that we that we see as adding value to our town and for people who live here. So I I kudos to everybody. We do have the market this weekend. Next week is Eat, Drink and Be Marion on the 14th. There's only a few tickets left out of the 400, so if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, it's a fun event. And it's a, it's a great way to see Uptown active and we used to kind of see see Uptown active just on those types of events. It's really interesting because last night I was in Uptown for dinner and it was packed and the restaurants were full and the, you know, there was people, there were people walking around and it wasn't that long ago and it was kind of deserted at night. And so again, another indicator and a testament to all the great progress and that we are providing what people desire because it's become a destination and a desired place to be. Reiterate that office hours is every Saturday, it's council well, for the last eight years has made a commitment to to being available and to being accessible and to take away all the excuses about not being accessible and not being transparent about things. So we appear, we are at, traditionally at the library, and we will be back there once the new library opens, but we are at every every farmer's market with information, ready to take the notepad, ready to take people's comments, people's questions, provide information and just engage and meet people and share the excitement about our city. So I I encourage and invite everyone that has a question, that wants to meet their council members to make a stop at the farmer's market in Tobby Park and take out, take advantage of that of that opportunity. One final thing, something exciting that I'm working on is I'm working on a community orientation onboarding program. Grant mentioned his son and we we were, we're working hard to to make our community attractive so that people who grew up here can see themselves living here and can see themselves having opportunities to enjoy their lives here, so and we're we're getting there because more and more I hear younger people say Marion's become a cool place, you know, and so, and that's our goal. You know, every time I talk to kids at schools or different, my youth council, anybody, I tell them that's our goal is we want them to grow up being proud of where they've grown up. Wherever they go, to speak proudly about where they grew up and hopefully come back and use their talent and their energy here to use their ideas here and to help them to be the next set of group of leaders that take our community further. So this this program that I'm partnering with Chamber and Metco on is a community orientation onboarding program for summer interns at various companies as well as newer employees at various companies who want to figure out how to be engaged, how to be able to make an impact, what those opportunities are, recreation, housing opportunities, all those types of things that that are really important to people today, making a decision where they want to live. Young people today choose where they want to live and then they look for a job. They don't follow their job around. They pick where they want to live first and then they look for the job. So that program is to help educate people on what those opportunities are for them here so they can see themselves setting roots here and 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 living here and being part of our community, so. I've talked long enough, but it's all good stuff. Let's keep reaching higher. Let's keep working together, giving each other the benefit of the doubt and seeing the best in each other. And together we will keep moving Marion forward. Thank you. Have a great evening.